Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting of March 28, 2023 at 7:09 PM. If we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unafraid, not invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business this evening is approval not required. We have several of them on the agenda. The first is, "The purpose of this plan is to depict the existing perimeter boundaries of each of the solar projects in an effort to clean up descriptions of the parcels. Assessors map 127 lot 10-0, Solar Carver 1, 324 Tremont Street." Do we have anybody here to speak on this particular project? If you could introduce yourself, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to make the address that the town council corresponds to?
Please, if you give Mr. Bott a second here. Please, Mr. Bott.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. So, we have five A&Rs on the agenda for this evening. I spoke with the surveyor the other day because I was trying to figure out, you know, what had changed on the plans. So, after figuring, seeing that there's minimal changes and sometimes in some cases, none, I just wanted to make sure we were on sound footing. So, I contacted through the town administrator, town council, and wrote, "The planning board has numerous A&Rs on the agenda. I don't see many changes in lot lines, and it's been described to me by the surveyors confirming their survey of a perimeter. I'm pretty sure that even without changes to the lot lines, the board is obliged to endorse the plans forthwith since they derive their frontage from a public way. While they could likely do the same with an 81X plan, it would appear they have the option of either. Obviously, filing an A&R plan to an 81X entitles them to a three-year grandfathering provision." And I'll speak English in just a second. And so, town council replied, "Tom, you are correct. The plans proposing the single lot that do not depict a subdivision, and therefore, in my opinion, are entitled to endorsement." So, what Massachusetts general 81P says, "If a piece of land has frontage on a public way, then the planning board shall endorse the plan within 21 days." It's not discretionary. The board has some discretion if we're into ways that aren't public streets that existed prior to subdivision control. We went through this with Bunny's Lane a few weeks back. But if a plan is presented to the planning board, and it's on a public way, the planning board, according to the law, shall endorse it, and "shall" is not an option, shall endorse it within 21 days. So, we have five plans. There are some changes to a couple of them, but for the most part, the five plans you'll see tonight are all proper per town council and all subject to endorsement by the planning board because they do not depict a subdivision. And that is the general rule. If it's on a way, a public way, or a way created under subdivision control, and it doesn't require a subdivision review, the planning board shall endorse the plan forthwith, and that forthwith is within 21 days. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Kenneth Conti. I am the professional land surveyor who provided these plans and performed the surveys for the property owner. And I'm here with Rob.
Yep. Rob Dambroso for the record, Dambroso Law &amp; Plymouth. I'm here on behalf of Pine Gate as well.
The first plan that you have in front of you is 324 Tremont Street. Again, that's the existing parcel, Assessors map 127 lot 10. And our plan again is depicts the perimeter based on a boundary survey that we performed and confirms the perimeter boundary of the existing parcel as being approximately 36 acres.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight acres. I'm sorry. My eyes. Again, the wetland boundaries on the property, which are primarily consists of upland and your regular cranberry bogs, have all been confirmed by the Conservation Commission as far as the resource areas go and all associated with the solar project that has been permitted.
All right. Are there any buildable portions of land on here? I don't see any zoning bylaws.
Yeah. There is, you know, there are pockets of upland, and, you know, the lot does have adequate frontage and upland area, but, you know, the buildable property or portion of it will be subject to all the permits. It does contain a proper upland and frontage.
And I would add, Mr. Shea, if I could, that endorsement by the planning board does not confer buildability. It doesn't speak to it one way or the other, just to be clear.
Right. Right. Because I see you have frontage, but I don't see that it provides adequate access. So, I know that we are at a point in this particular project where approval of the A&R, but on the other hand, because there's buildable portions of the property and you didn't outline them appropriately according to the application required, that that should have been said on this plan, it's incomplete. And this is for the purposes of solar development?
So, I'll take a stab if that's okay, Ken. Yeah. So, this plan is not being presented in tandem with any proposal to develop the lot or build on it?
Right. Whatever is priorly approved is priorly approved.
Correct. And whatever may come down, the pike may come down the pike. I mean, you know, really, we're asking this board to recognize the lot lines that are portrayed on this plan, and I think as Mr. Bott set forth for you, unless this board makes a determination that we're subdividing the parcel, we're entitled to endorsement. So, there is no subdivision. Again, we're happy to answer questions, but, you know, whether it's a buildable lot or not, again, isn't going to be a separate determination and really isn't at issue tonight.
Right. No, but if we identify it as not a buildable lot, because, again, the accessway to it is not sufficient in the fact that it's just a two-track, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere around 10 feet wide, it's a bog road. Is that correct? It runs through the wetlands?
There were several bog roads throughout the property, and it's where, this is one lot, and you're questioning adequate access for one lot?
Well, it's, again, it's about safety, and, again, if somebody, if public services has to access this lot for any reason and fall in a cranberry bog, then eventually that comes back to us. But I don't have any further questions.
I have a quick question. Is there, is there any difference between what you're presenting here and what the Assessors map already indicates?
So, the Assessors maps are not boundary plans, right? So, they don't necessarily depict the exact front, you know, the exact lot area?
They've got all the exact same measurements.
I honestly, we don't look at Assessors maps to identify lot areas. That's why we're trying to put this on record to make sure that our boundary survey gets filed with the town appropriately. Again, we're not changing any lot lines. All we're asking is for your endorsement that this is not a subdivision, and that's exactly what it is.
I'm just merely stating that this seems to be less, it's something that's not required for you guys to sub, you guys don't even, don't need to do it because it's already, the Assessors maps are already, already have the same boundaries that you have put in place here on your survey.
So, I'm a little puzzled. You're taking issue with the fact that we're consistent with the Assessors lines? That doesn't seem an issue to me. That seems, if anything, a positive.
It just seems completely unnecessary to bring this, to bring this forward because the Assessors maps are already, they're already there. So, all you're doing, all you're doing now is...
Confirming the boundaries without a boundary survey.
Right. We want to memorialize, this is an instrument survey plan. Yes.
Yes, and you, and you are, and I'm certain that you guys are also looking to, based on this, going for a three-year zoning freeze in order to make sure that anything that comes down from town meeting doesn't interfere with anything that you guys think you can, think you might want to do in the next couple of years.
Are you asking for a reaction? Or you want to know our motivation for following the plan? I mean, I think that's, you know, it's discretionary. I mean, we're here submitting a plan and asking you if it's a subdivision plan or not, you know? Again, whether there's intention to develop the land, whether this is done for zoning freeze purposes, whether it's done for purposes of giving comfort to financing partners who might want a clear instrument survey plan of record, I mean, those are, any of those would be a valid motivation. But again, I don't, not sure I understand the board's inquiry into our motivation to seek your endorsement of a properly submitted plan. And just to be clear, again, I'm not trying to tell this board its business, but the state statute says this board shall endorse, doesn't say may endorse.
At no point in time did I indicate that, that I would not do anything. And I don't think anyone on the board has said anything to that effect. We have, we are entitled to, and we have a right to question what you bring before us.
Absolutely. Happy to help.
And, again, this already matches what the town's Assessors maps are. In my opinion, it's a waste of time and money.
No effect. Just for clarification, this already has a prior permit applied to it.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Is there approved permit in relation to this project?
This project has been permitted. There is a special permit.
Okay, that's all, no, simple. All right. If there's no further questions, the board will accept a motion to approve the A&R with the, it's not a condition statement, that it is not to be considered a buildable property outside of already approved permits. I will make that said motion.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Any discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Deon.
Mr. Deon says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is approval not required. Number two, "The purpose of the plan is to depict the existing perimeter boundaries of each of the solar projects in an effort to clean up descriptions of the parcels. Assessors map 127 lot 21-1, Solar Carver 1, 340 Tremont Street."
Kenneth Conti again, reveals in Thomas. Very similar to the previous A&R that he just reviewed. The property depicts existing Assessors map parcel, map 127 parcel 21, approximately 31 acres of land and bog. The property plan here depicts the approved resource areas, which include cranberry bogs and upland bog and some reservoir on the property as well. Property has approximately, oh, about...
Thirty-one acres.
Yeah.
Thirty-one acres.
Yep. Nine hundred sixty-five thousand square feet of water bog and upland bog, leaving it approximately 400,000 square feet, 10 acres of upland. Does have access and to Tremont Street and Javis Maxum Brook Road, adequate frontage as well on both of those streets. And we ask that the board endorse this as an approval not required.
All right. Again, I don't see any identified areas for building that fit within the zoning bylaws, so I'm guessing there are none?
So, you're asking us to make a...
Well, it should have been in the application. Any buildable areas or the zoning bylaw setbacks and requirements, if there's areas on this as an A&R, it should be, it should be listed on here. I see, what I, I believe, and maybe you can clarify, is a pump house out on the frontage?
Yes.
Yep. And we've delineated upland, you know, which, again, is potentially buildable, but, again, that would be subject to a full permitting process.
Right. But it's not identified on the sheet like it's supposed to be according to the application. All right. I see you got a private road through there. And is that a pump house out, out front? Says pond.
Yeah.
It doesn't identify what the structure is.
I'm not sure what that is.
Let me, if I can hear you.
What's that? Good question.
It's correct, Mr. Shea.
A pump house?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions by the board?
The two uplands there, you've got a square box there. What's that square box on? Between the two upland bogs in the back there?
Oh, that small squared icon? I imagine that's a shed of some kind?
Yeah.
For the reservoirs, I expect maybe a pump house for the...
Yeah.
There's also a correction to the map we need to make.
Which is?
It says lot 2-1, and we're supposed to be looking at lot 21?
That's a, that's a new designation.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
The 2-1 is, is just a record designation, not to be in accordance with Assessors reference. It's coincidental.
I don't, okay. I can see the confusion because the Assessors reference isn't on here either.
Yes.
All right. Any further questions by the board?
And it does, just point of information, if you look at the second box in the right-hand margin from the top, that has the Assessors information, just so you know.
Oh, yep. Parcel ID number 21, 54738/261, Plan Book 64, page 1200. Thank you. All right. The chair will accept the motion to approve the A&R for, geez, lot 21-1, 340 Tremont Street with the same statement attached. This is not a buildable lot in its current state, aside from already pre-approved permits.
I will make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gatske. Do we have further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Deon.
Mr. Deon says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is an approval not required. "The purpose of the plan is to depict the existing perimeter boundaries of each of the solar projects in an effort to clean up descriptions of the parcels. Assessors map 92, lot 22-0, 62 Rochester Road."
Ken Conti here again to present this A&R plan. Again, this is a kind of confirmatory boundary plan depicting Assessors map 92 parcel 22, identified as lot one on our plan. And this, this particular parcel is not to be considered a building lot, except for the purposes of a solar facility, as while it does have frontage on Rochester Road, it does not have adequate frontage. And, you know, it does have adequate upland area. And again, this, this was a lot that had been previously created for the permitting of a solar, solar project. And we've had the resource areas confirmed and shown on the plan, as well as the, identified the acreage of the resource areas, approximately 10.7 acres out of a total of 14.7, so there's about four acres of upland on this property.
I don't see that that's identified on the map. I see water acre and bog area.
Yeah, and then the total lot is 14.7, so it's not specifically...
Excellent.
...separated, but...
All right. So, this is not to be considered a building lot?
That's correct.
And nothing to do with anything? Just out of curiosity, you've received a variance to the ZBA for the frontage requirements for solar?
I don't know that we've received a variance, but I think we do have a special permit.
A special permit is a separate item, and I would, I would recommend to you that you seek the variance because the special permit won't hold up for that. We cannot, the planning board cannot give a variance for that. A special permit cannot give a variance for that. So, this is just to help you out here.
Okay.
All right. Questions from the board?
You said you had frontage.
Thirteen-two feet, is that correct?
Yes.
So, it could never be a buildable lot. How do you make it?
It's not even adequate for...
Yeah. Fire. And this was approved for solar, huh? And the fire department okayed that little road to get in and out?
They did.
In case of emergency?
I wasn't involved in that initial permit process in 2019, but yes, we would have had to have, the permit holder would have had...
Could we get that so we could see that before we make a decision on the A&R on this?
No, because it has, it has nothing to do with the A&R.
Okay. It's just kind of weird that 13-foot wide is good enough for the fire department. I wasn't here then either, so that's why I'm raising that question, you know? Thirteen feet.
I mean, I think, you know, maybe the rationale was that you had an agricultural operation on here, you can continue to have one, and solar is not particularly combustible or dangerous, so it's no more, again, I'm just speculating, that it's no more fire risk than it was. There's no personnel on site in connection with solar, generally speaking. So, that's just speculation, though, Mr. Deon. I wasn't part of that permitting process.
I wonder if there's access. I don't know. It's a hand adjustment.
Further questions? All right. The chair will accept a motion to approve the A&R for Assessors map lot 22-0 with the notation that this is not a buildable lot and without further relief from the zoning board.
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Deon.
Mr. Deon says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Bott, I have a fifth A&R listed, but I don't seem to have any information in regards to it.
I think it was only three.
No, we have a fourth.
There's, we still have to do the fourth.
Did I?
62 Rochester.
That was map 92 lot 22 that we just discussed.
Yep, you're correct. My paperwork might be out of order here. I might have dropped it in the car. I had an exceptional, um, um, if you mind if I look over your shoulder at the map to refresh myself? Thank you kindly. All right. Our next order of business is approval not required for, "The purpose of the plan is to consolidate Assessors parcels 92141, 9215, 9216, and 9217 to form Lot One to support the development of a solar project, Solar Three, located at 62 Rochester Road." Thank you, gentlemen.
Ken Conti here again. I promise it gets a little bit easier now, a little more conventional. This is a consolidation plan, so we're picking the existing Assessors parcels, as Mr. Shea said, 14-1, 15, 16, and 17, and creating one parcel out of the four parcels, thereby removing the old Assessors lines shown on the current maps. Current parcel is approximately 29.3 acres, of which we have a resource area table on the plan. Approximately 17 out of the 29 acres is resource areas that have been confirmed and permitted in accordance with the solar project that previously identified. The plan has adequate frontage on Rochester Road, approximately 180 feet of frontage. And as I stated earlier, again, there's approximately 15 acres of upland, 12 acres of upland.
180 feet of frontage? I'm having trouble seeing that on this.
Yeah, it's an addition. We have an arc length of 141.9, and then a tangent length of about, again, my eyes, I apologize, 38, Rock?
I gave my copy to Conti. Let's see.
Oh, all right. I see.
These items together, approximately 180 feet.
Yep.
Eyes are much better.
No. Been a long day.
What are the structures that are on the property?
I don't even remember this property now. I think those are large garages to support the... I think those are large garages to, to support the Cranberry operation.
Okay.
Maintenance building.
I seem to remember when this came ahead before us, the property next door was included in, in the area for the project. You've had approval from the fire department in regards to the permitting of this?
Yeah, Rob Dambrosa for the record, Dambrosa Law &amp; Plymouth. Uh, again, I wasn't involved in the 2019 permitting of the solar project, but I, I'm unaware of any solar project or other special permit issuing that doesn't have fire department approval, so my assumption is...
Well, I, I want to make sure specifically, because I see that the bog areas, um, take up considerable portions of the access way. It has nothing to do with the A and R.
There is a 30-foot wide access easement through the center of the property for, potentially, that could be the I...
Right, right. I, I just see that a couple of the Cranberry bogs and wetlands, um, encompass part of that 30-foot. All right, um...
Is it Solar Carver 3? Oh, yes.
And another question, um, off on the right-hand side, I see area subject to interest of Beverly Johnson heirs. I, any idea?
Yeah, that's, that's a title, title issue, um, that we identified during our survey, and, um, you know, it's just a, uh, a question with respect to ownership, title ownership.
And... So is that not included in this?
It's included in the area.
But you don't, you haven't...
They may, they, they may not have clear title to it at this point, it hasn't been decided yet, so...
Well, wouldn't we...
It's part of the property, it is part of the... So we did a boundary survey, and the perimeter that's shown on the plan is what we've depicted as the boundary associated with the deed. Through our chase, you know, there's a question on that portion of the property as to clear title, so as a function of the ownership, you know, avoided that area for development purposes, so that...
All right. But the lot lines are consistent?
Yes.
The original lot lines?
Yes.
And that was a portion of the original lot? Or was that a lot in and of itself?
Yeah, Mr. Shea, my interpretation is that this has been treated by the owner as his property, but when title was examined by the original permitting entity, uh, there was some question as to title, maybe an encumbrance or something that hadn't been cleared, so being conservative, they deducted that land area from the lot area when determine, when applying for the permit, but I, I think they would assert ownership rights. And regarding, uh, the fire department question, I did just grab the file for this Solar Carver 3 project, and, uh, the, this board's findings indicate two comment letters from the Carver Fire Department dated August 14th, 2019, were received, um, one commenting on the site plan review, the other on battery, energy storage, and there was an additional letter clarifying access road requirements from the fire department on September 19th, 2019.
Okay. As long as they're, they're fine with the, the access, that's, that's quite all right with me.
I think you guys should, do you wanna?
Right. Well, I, I, all I heard was a clear title, and that, and it does raise questions in regards to... So it, I, please, I appreciate it, but thank you.
Not a public hearing.
So, Mr. Bott, without clear title, and I know he can assert ownership of the property, but that hasn't been established, so...
Yeah, we're, uh, as I said, the, the standard for the board's endorsement is it doesn't depict a subdivision, and it has frontage on a way, a public way. Uh, and that is the realm of the planning board for endorsing an A and R. The use, the acreage, it's strictly frontage, and where is that frontage at? The frontage is on a public way. If it doesn't have the adequate frontage, the board can, as they've done in a couple, note that it's not a buildable lot as it exists currently.
And how do we deal with?
I don't think we do. I think they do. But there's no, there's no area for an A and R.
Well, it's been, all right. So it's been identified...
Yep.
Uh, that the area is subject to interest of Beverly Johnson's heirs, and it is a portion of a current lot. Questions by the board? Seeing none.
Uh, Mr. Bott?
Sure.
If you don't, so you're saying that this Beverly Johnson's lot, um, has, uh, no one to fare in doing the A and R?
Correct. The, the, the planning board's role is, 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 uh, and this is about as simple as it gets in our day jobs, our night jobs.
Oh, no.
Is that if it's got frontage on a way, then the board's obliged to endorse it. Doesn't, acreage isn't something, and having those notations on the plan is probably a very good practice by the assessor to make, or the, uh, the, uh, give me a hand.
Surveyor.
Surveyor, thank you. Uh, that, uh, you know, these are, uh, items of interest on the plan.
So, the, it, I'm just a little confused, because to me, that would be like that somebody's piece of property, how can you include it into his A and R if he doesn't own that property?
Well, I think what I heard is that the...
They're working on it, but no one has a definite title on it, correct?
If, I, I wonder if you could take a moment to come up and show the original lot lines for that lot? Is that its own separate lot, or is it part of a larger parcel?
No. May I, Ken?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, no, Mr. Chairman, this has always been, you know, the A and R plan, we, we couldn't in good conscience anyway, submit an A and R plan that purported to expand the boundaries of what's a matter of public record, so this conforms to, you know, the Assessor's lot area. I think as, as Mr. Bott pointed out, you know, our, our professional land surveyor, Ken Conti, just included notation here that, you know, there may be an interest asserted relative to this portion of lot, but we didn't redraw, we didn't redraw lot lines.
No, no, I understand that.
Create new area, yeah.
My, my question was, is it part of a larger existing lot currently?
This has always been part of...
Or is it specifically its own lot?
No, no, it's part of Lot 92-16, Assessor's parcel 92-16.
Yes, that's what, and I was wondering if you could come up and...
Yeah, I could show it to you.
And show me the lot lines of the full lot.
All right, let's see. The same plan I'm looking at here?
No, it's not, it's not the right plan.
If you could get us to the fourth one, which is...
62 Rochester.
Yeah. So I can zoom in and show you guys.
Please. Yeah.
62 Solar Carver 3, and it's Lot 90, Map 92. I think it got deleted, or just knocked off my screen, so give me a second, I'll bring it back up. All right, so we are... 62, 3 North? 62 Rochester. Yep, yeah. Uh, 3S, 3N. All right, so I'll zoom in a little bit here. All right, so you can see my cursor up there on the screen. You see that notation, Assessor's parcel 92-16, Assessor's parcel 92-17, and then you've got it running north to south here, 92-16, and then you've got this bold notation, 92-16. So, this entire hatched area here, running to the outside of that, you know, hatched area, this is the Assessor's parcel 92-16, which is being consolidated with Parcell 17, 15, and 14. So those thin, uh, broken lines show the existing boundaries.
Thank you. My issue is that an application should be done by the owners of record, so, uh... I will leave it up to the board. The Chair will accept a motion to approve this A and R with the notation that it is not a buildable lot, and that in no way does the board wish to impede, transfer, or otherwise convey the area of land subject to interest of Beverly Johnson heirs.
One more time?
The board will accept a motion to approve the A and R for lots 92-14, 1, 92-15, 92-16, and 92-17 to form one lot. The notation shall read it is not a buildable lot outside of prior approved permits, and that the board does not wish and has no interest in conveying, transferring, or otherwise has any interest in the area subject to an interest of Beverly Johnson heirs. It is not the wish of this board to convey any form of transfer or interest to anybody
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gasky.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. Do we have further discussion amongst the board?
Mr. Deon says nay.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And, uh, Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much. This is another A and R. The purpose of the plan is to consolidate Assessor's parcels 7 and 8 on Map 128, located at Tremont Street. We don't have an address for this?
This is right. I don't think so.
Lot 7 and 8.
It's right next to 340...
I didn't get it, lay my agenda through today. No, I, I see why it doesn't have an address. Um, I remember the property, Mr. Meredith's property. Where's, where's the original lot lines for this? I, I...
Yep, okay, so, um, Ken Conti again here, presenting on behalf of the owner. Beals and Thomas on the surveyor, and what we are doing here is amalgamating, or we, or removing a lot line that sep, currently separates Parcel 7 and 8, which is shown, um, actually, if you look at the enlargement, the sub-sketch, you'll see we have a notation that says line to be removed. So there's a small little property line that shows up on the Assessor's maps, um, that was drawn from the, uh...
Right there at the cursor arrow.
So the town line is being removed.
Oh.
No, the one that's perpendicular to the town line.
Yes, sorry.
There's a tiny little line between the town line and the road.
Yeah, I, I get it.
I think it's, I think it's up here. Is that in the upper left-hand corner, very corner of the map, where it says, uh, 128.7?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right.
So this property adjoins other property owned by the owner in Wareham, and, um, you know, it's not to be considered a separate building lot, obviously, in Carver, as, as much of it is, you know, water and, um, Cranberry bog. Um, we've identified the property in Carver to be approximately 36 acres, and of which, uh, wait. About eight, eight to 10 acres of it is upland. It does have frontage on Carver Road or, um, Tremont Street in Carver, or Carver Road in Wareham. Again, we're just trying to eradicate the, uh, existing boundary lines shown on the Carver Assessor's map, so that it's considered just, you know, one parcel in Carver.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Seeing none. Uh, the Chair will accept the motion to approve the A and R, um, for Tremont Streets to join Lot 7 and 8, uh, with the notation, this is not to be considered a buildable lot.
I'll accept motion.
Motion made by Mr. Deon.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Deon?
Mr. Deon says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you. Mr. Bott, don't, uh, let me forget I have that. All right. Our next order of business is a minor modification request by Solar Carver LL1 LLC for minor Our next order of business is a minor modification, request by Solar Carver 1 LLC for minor modification of site plan review located at 324 Tremont Street, Assessors Map 127, Lot 10-0. Minor mod, yes. If you could identify yourself and give us a little breakdown.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Nice to be here again. Rob Dambroso, Dambroso Law in Plymouth. I am attorney for the petitioner, Solar Carver 1 LLC. With me, I've got Julianne Wooton of Pine Gate Renewables, which is the entity holding a controlling interest in the applicant. So I'll tell you where we are on this one. I think this is a project that, well, I know this Board's familiar with and most people in Carver are. It's got a bit of a bedeviled history here, as you're aware. But to give you a rundown, in 2019, this very Board, this planning Board and the Carver Conservation Commission approved this project. It's a dual-use solar energy project on Tremont Street. The preliminary designs that were approved by this Board utilized steel pile foundations for the panel racking. In May 2020, that was a predecessor entity, in May 2020, this entity, Solar Carver 1, acquired the project and through its continued site diligence and engineering work, coupled with disruptions to the global supply chain during the pandemic, determined that it would be preferred and more feasible to use timber piles as opposed to the original steel design. And so they applied for permits to such effect, building permits, and received building and electric permits for the timber pile design in February 2021, and shortly thereafter began construction. Due to concerns expressed by the Conservation Commission relative to the timber piles, that process ceased and Pine Gate, this entity, Solar Carver 1 LLC, returned to this Board and to the Conservation Commission and obtained permission to substitute precast concrete piles for the timber piles. In December of 2021, this Board approved the change to move from, move to concrete piles as a minor modification to the site plan. We're now seeking that very same approval, another minor modification of site plan, oddly enough, to revert to the steel I-beam pile foundations that were previously approved. The layout's going to be quite similar to what was approved. In fact, the project limits decreased slightly since the 2019 approval. The piles are going to be the same material, grade 50 low alloy steel, same depth. They'll be driven to refusal. The only change is a slight increase in the thickness to ensure structural soundness and stability, which was an original concern that was part of the pivot to timber. So we, last month, appeared before the Conservation Commission, received an extension from them to allow us to complete the work. Again, I just would like to point and note for the record that my client's been, gone above and beyond in terms of cooperating with the town and, you know, the cost has really not been a factor. They've done everything asked of them as promptly as possible. When the timber piles weren't acceptable, they came right out. And but for some litigation at the Conservation Commission, we'd probably be further along right now. But we're, again, we're going back, we're asking to go back to the original design with the steel piles. And we certainly feel this is even more minor than the last alteration, which was a change in materials. So that's why we're here tonight.
You never came back for a minor mod in regards to the timber poles, though, correct?
That's correct.
I wanted to ask a question, too.
Yeah.
Attorney Dambroso.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make it really clear that in this case, the, as a Board, we agreed to allow the steel pilings to go in. I believe it was another company that came in and put the poles in. So this Board did not approve the poles going in. This Board approved the steel pilings going in originally. So that was changed without our approval.
That's correct, Mr. Robinson.
Okay. That didn't sound like what you just said a little while ago.
Yeah, well, so.
It sounded like you said that this Board approved that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was struck from what you said.
Yeah, so if I misspoke for the record, what I meant to say is that we received building and electrical permits for the timber piles. This Board, correct, did not approve or weigh in on the timber design.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make that really clear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Will there be any welding taking place in regards to this?
On site?
On site.
No.
No, excellent. Questions from the board?
Yeah, so you pulled the telephone poles out or timber is out, which are what, 12-inch round?
I think that's correct. I believe that's correct.
Now you're going to pour steel in there. What's that, four inch square?
I don't know the precise dimensions. It's a smaller diameter than what.
So my point is, how stable is the ground going to hold these up since you already had a 12-inch hole in the ground? You're going to put these four inches in there? Is it going to, you sturdy enough to hold it all?
Yeah, well, may I, Julianne? Yeah, Mr. Dion, it's a good question. You know, my understanding is that those, you know, the holes have kind of, you know, it's a viscous substrate, right? So I don't think there's, you know, holes as if you had dug into a hard substrate.
No, it's sand. It's not a hard substance. It's a soft substance.
Yeah, so.
So what I'm saying, you had a 12-inch hole and all you do is put more sand in there. Now you want to put a four-inch square in there. Is that going to hold?
Well, it's an I-beam, so it's not a square. And the way it holds is, and again, I'm not a technical expert, but it's driven to refusal. So they drive it with a pile driver.
Better than what the poles were.
Should be comparable. It should be because the refusal occurs, again, I'm not an engineer, but refusal occurs when it can't be driven any further. So, and again, the technical folks here said it would be approximately the same depths.
Could you refresh the board on the?
Also, isn't a lot of the depth of the pilings?
I'm sorry, there's some noise in the background. I'm in trouble hearing.
Can you refresh the board on the depth of the pilings?
So the depths are variable. I don't believe we have a uniform protocol for depth. Again, they're to be driven to refusal. So the length, you know, again, I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure how best to answer that, Julianne, maybe.
I think it's approximately 20 to 40 feet below. But it's a range, to Ross's point, it's to refusal. But I believe the deepest, I don't believe it goes below, deeper than 40 feet below ground.
Isn't a lot of the support from a piling also just the friction?
I believe that's right.
It's the friction that holds it in place, resistance. Right. Doesn't have to hit bedrock.
Right.
Unless you're building a skyscraper, but otherwise, it's the friction of the substance around the pole that holds friction, clamps it in.
Did the Conservation Commission have any conditions in regards to this?
They did not.
Yeah, I mean, they were quite supportive of the project. And again, we were before them for an extension. So, yeah, no conditions on the extension.
Thank you, thank you. All right. This is not a public. I don't want to make this a general thing, but have the poles been removed from the site?
I believe they have. So there, I don't know if all of them.
Please, please. Please.
I will say, I don't know if all of them have been removed. I know they're being sold and relocated, but the ones that are on site are being, were prepared in a way that was approved by the CONCOM where they're not making contact directly with the ground covered with whatever means that they were covered, I believe, a tart or, but anything that was stored on site was done pursuant to the requirements by the CONCOM.
Do you have an expectation of when all of them will be gone?
I do not, unfortunately.
They do present a hazard in, they're piled up, correct?
They're piled up but covered and not making contact with the ground.
Well, it's just that the size and the amount of them are hazardous to injury is part of where I'm going with this.
So I just want to clarify something, Mr. Shea. You know, when we most recently returned to the Conservation Commission in February, they didn't impose conditions, but when they initially required the removal, which of course we were willing to do, they did have conditions, as Julianne pointed out, relative to the storage and safety. So those protocols have been observed as dictated by the Conservation Commission. Can you rein this in, please, Mr. Chairman?
You can rein it in, but I have pictures from tonight. It's fine.
I understand. Thank you. What do you feel would be a suitable amount of time to remove the prior unapproved materials from the site?
I do not know how to answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say Conservation gave us three years, you know, and again, if you look at the record, you know, they remarked that they were pleased with the efforts and cooperation that we've made and wanted us to do it the right way and gave us really as much time as we needed. We asked for three years out of abundance of caution. Again, I would imagine it's going to be less than three years to get rid of those materials. That three years would govern the life of the install. So I can confidently tell you, we expect it to be less than three years. You know, whether it's going to be six months or 12 months, I can't.
I was really hoping you were going to say somewhere between six and 12 months.
And that may well be the case. I just, you know.
I would certainly think prior to commencing construction again, those piles will be gone when we're replacing with steel, which is anticipated to be.
Right. Now, currently, your permit is good for the next, what, year?
Which permit, the special permit?
Yes, to the Board.
Well, yeah, that's probably, I'll have to look at it here. Well, I guess, you know, my position, actually, Mr. Shea, as I think about it, rather than flipping through, shuffling papers here, is that, you know, because the permit's been exercised, you know, it continues to be valid. You know, the life of the permit is governed, it's a start date, right? So when this Board issues a special permit, it says activity needs to commence within, for instance, two years.
A certain amount of activity needs to commence within, and currently, as it stands, there's nothing.
Well, there's been millions of dollars' worth of activity on the site. Again, litigation.
People running around is not, site prep and putting in unapproved materials is not making any sort of progress towards getting the project.
Well, and again, the most recent delay was due to litigation from an outside party. That had to be resolved for us to move forward. Our hands were tied for the last 18 months for that reason.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Please.
Could you explain to me how the poles are stored right now? I'm hoping you're going to tell me that they're not stored in a way that they could collapse and somebody could be crushed by them.
No, and.
How are they?
Unfortunately, so I believe they're piled on site laterally, though they're laying down. They're not in a way that could pile down.
So they're not stacked, I hope?
How do you mean by stacked?
Stacked on top of them like logs.
You don't want a pyramid that could tumble, right? Is that what?
Right. I'm concerned about that.
Honestly, I don't know precisely how they're stacked on site.
How are they on site?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'm sorry.
I would, Rob, I would like, I would like to know that this is not a safety issue because if it's a safety issue, I want it addressed right away.
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be really, you know, important for the town that this is not unsafe.
Yeah. And again, just to be clear, it's private property. So we wouldn't expect that there would be, you know, public company, but.
I do understand that.
Well, I think also a part of it is that the poles have to be moved and certain safety issues are raised with moving something of that size and weight that's in a stacked position. I think that's the broader concern we have here.
Yeah, we can get you an answer.
If I may.
Please.
Can you confirm that all the poles have actually been removed from the ground?
Yes, they have been.
Questions, concerns? Bless you again. I think in the interest of the health and safety of the residents of Carver, this is a 42-acre site, correct? And with the concerns raised in regards to the unapproved poles being put in, I think it would behoove the Board to incorporate, you said this is 42 acres? Two monitoring wells on site. And I believe the Board would want to see that poles are removed before the steel comes in and construction on that begins. And I would think a reasonable amount of time or a very generous amount of time by the Board would be within 12 months. Just the safety aspects in regards to this are monumental.
Yeah, so poles to be removed within 12 months and in any event, before any steel is installed?
Brought to site.
Before any steel is brought to the site?
Right. Remove the prior materials before you bring in new materials. Is that acceptable to the Board?
And that is acceptable to my client.
All right. Further questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, the Board will accept a motion to approve the minor modifications with the conditions as stated.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. Do we have further discussion amongst the Board? All right. Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Alan Sedillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next order of business is a request by Solar Carver 3 LLC for minor modification of site plan review located at 62 Rochester Road Solar, Assessors Map 92, Lot 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 22, which I think we've changed previous plea in this meeting. Please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Rob Dambroso, Dambroso Law in Plymouth. I've got with me Julianne Wooton of Pine Gate. Pine Gate Renewables is the entity that controls Solar Carver 3 LLC. Similar to the presentation that was just made, this is the sister project of Solar Carver 1, which was permitted by this Board and the Conservation Commission in 2019. That project was approved with preliminary designs that utilized steel pile foundations for the solar panel racking. Subsequent to that approval, the project was acquired by my client's entity, the Solar Carver 3 LLC, and a determination was made due to engineering study and disruptions to the global supply chain that timber piles would be preferred to the original steel design. Building and electric permits were issued in February 2021 and construction began shortly thereafter. The Conservation Commission expressed concern over the timber piles, so work ceased immediately. Pine Gate returned to this Board and to the Conservation Commission and, at that point, obtained permission via minor modification in December of 2021 to substitute precast concrete piles for the timber piles as a minor modification to the site plan. We've now come full circle and seek approval along the same procedural lines for another minor modification of the site plan to revert to the steel I-beam foundations that were initially approved. We propose to drive the steel piles in a similar layout to what has already been approved to refusal using the same material, grade 50 low alloy steel. And again, as with the previous. And again, as with the previous project, the only change to the steel I-beams is a slightly greater thickness to ensure soundness and stability. So again, as with the other project, we received an extension from the Carver Conservation Commission in February to allow work to complete. All poles are out of the ground, and again, we're on similar footing to the presentation that was just made, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
Do we have the same issue there with the poles onsite still?
There are still some poles remaining onsite, yes.
Okay. Do we know if they're stacked?
It's the same situation. I'm not clear to the specificity around how they're specifically laid out onsite.
Okay, well, it would be similar to the last project, that I would like to make sure that they are removed as soon as they can possibly be removed for safety purposes.
Yep, yes, sir.
What's the size of this site?
So... Hang on, bear with me. 29 acres of dual-use solar, Mr. Shea.
And like the other one, this one is surrounded by residential homes? And is this the one with the 13-foot access drive in regards to it?
That's correct. This is the same one.
On the original application, were both of the properties on Rochester Road used in regards to this as... But when we just approved the A&R, it was only the garages and not the property next to it. I'm asking because that hasn't changed, correct?
The area of work has not changed.
No, no, the access to the main road, because...
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, the same protocol, same access, yeah.
All right. Questions by the board?
I recall, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Please.
We didn't have two points of access? I thought we had a point of access by the Shaw's property.
I could try to pull my A&R plans. This is 62, right?
Yeah, so I just... I'll just tell you, as Thomas, our civil engineer, and I'll point here if I could. So that small 13-foot wide access is here, and that was potential access. In fact, the site is primarily accessed off of Rochester Road down here.
So there are two points of access. Okay.
It's... I'm looking at your A&R here, and I only see it intersecting with Rochester Road at the 13-foot.
Basically, you've got two different sheets on the... I think you have two different A&R plans.
Okay, all right.
There's an access easement at Lot 20-1, looks like, going up to Lot 14 in the assessor's maps.
And that's a little over 16?
Uh, does it specify the access easement?
And that's the access in regards to it down by Lot 21A, uh, 20-1?
This is the 13-foot.
And then we looked at it and associated with the A&R. All right.
There was a north and south A&R plan presented, and that's...
You got the north one, and you got the south one.
Yeah, that's the south access on Rochester Road. That's the skinny access on Rochester Road. It was broken across two plans, so that's why you can't see it.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Rob. I appreciate that. So that's... Okay, yep, yep. This is the short one. I would recommend that all heavy deliveries come through this area too, but that's...
Yeah, I know. It had more room to widen.
I thought both of these properties were part of it, but my memory isn't what it used to be.
You may not have started.
Okay, all right.
There's proposed battery storage at the back end of somebody's house.
So these are two separate projects, correct? Or is it one, just two different lots?
Two lots, one project.
Okay. All right. Questions or comments from the board?
I do have one, and I don't know exactly how it can be approached. I know that this is probably not the right forum for dealing with this specific issue, but I do want to bring up something that I take umbrage to, and that is, based on this, looking at where it lines up with the project, that there is a... What size battery storage do you have proposed for this site?
I do not bring that set of plans, and I don't know the precise size system.
Greater than 1 megawatt, or?
It is greater than 1 megawatt, yes. I think it's a 2 megawatt.
And that this is supposed to be, from the looks of things, right behind somebody's house.
So I guess what I would offer, it sounds like there's maybe a safety concern here. I'm looking at the 2019 permit, and again, I wasn't part of that permitting process, but there is a finding in this board's decision, or that, actually, a condition, rather. Condition number four. Applicant shall conform to the recommendations of the Carver Fire Department bound in two comment letters dated August 14, 2019, one commenting on site plan review, the other commenting on battery energy storage system fire protection requirements. The Carver FD must approve and write in any modifications to its recommendations. And then it goes on to say the proposed battery storage system shall be installed in accordance with Mass CMR Chapter 52 stationary storage systems, including approved supervised smoke detection and fire alarm system, a thermal runaway system, a temperature maintained operating environment. And then it goes on to note, and then I'll wrap it up, the developers propose integrated fire suppression and detection systems. The design of these systems shall be in accordance with all applicable codes and requirements, included but not limited to... And then it goes on to list a number of NFPA code requirements, a Mass CMR, that's a building code requirement, and UL 9540. Let's just pull him up here. And a local disconnect installed in order for emergency crews to shut down power to the battery energy storage system enclosure. So I'm not...
I understand that everything was written out and everything else like that, but again, and I know, like I said, I don't think that this is the right place, the right time because of what's before us. We're dealing with what's before us. But what I look at, what I see, causes great concern and a deep concern for the safety of the people that are living right near that battery. I mean, we're already dealing with an issue in North Carver with Cranberry Point and the huge battery that's going in there. And to turn around and at least not address the location on this particular plan that there is a battery abutting somebody's property, I feel like that not saying something like that, not saying something about it would be doing a disservice to the entire town, and especially to the people that live right there. This is... The safety of these batteries are, in my opinion, not up to par, and it would be... I think it would be a great favor to the residents around there to consider another place on the property for location of this battery. That's where I am with that.
Just a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
It's just a recommendation. It's a personal concern, and again, a favor to the residents.
Mr. Chair, I do have one more question. Attorney Dambroso, can you tell me if this project is going to follow the changing of the Megapak I to the Megapak II XL? In that, as far as Mr. Gasky's question was concerned, as far as safety purposes are concerned?
I don't think we're anywhere near that size.
Will they be bringing this up to the same standards that, you know, we are looking at down the road for that project?
I mean, I think it's a much smaller battery, and so you're saying, will we implement the same safety protocol that...
Yes.
Gosh, I'm just not technically adept enough to answer that. I apologize.
Am I familiar with the... What was the term you used?
Actually, there's two gentlemen in the house that brought it to our attention last week, that with the development and researches being done, that there are... We're bringing up the standard of safety. So I was wondering if, in this case, if the same requirements are adhered to.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'll take the liberty of noting that, you know, because, you know, I'll analogize it to, you know, the generation capacity of solar panels. It's increasing and improving, you know, every year, every two years. I would assume that battery safety technology has improved and progressed since 2019 when this was permitted. So again, it's hard to fathom. I don't think if my client wanted to install a battery with old technology that wasn't, you know...
I don't think she'd be...
They wouldn't be able to get it.
I don't think they'd be able to.
They wouldn't be able to get it, yeah.
So I was wondering if they are indeed being expected to.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll get the latest and greatest available, and I don't think they're going to have an alternative.
You read off a whole...
I think that would be good information to pass on.
Yep.
You read off a whole list of things they have to comply with, all of the ULs. If those have all changed, they're going to have to change. You can't go back to...
Yeah, I mean, just like building code, you know, if we get a warehouse permit in 2019 and building code gets enacted in 2020 before we get a building permit, we've got to comply with code.
Right.
It's the same thing here.
I think they're going to have to comply with the new... All those acronyms you had from state, federal, batteries, company, design, you know.
Well, it's good. I'm just... My concern is that it would be grandfather claused in, that they were allowed to use the technology that they came before us that was permitted instead of bringing it up to standard.
They have to use the standards in place from those agencies at the time that you're...
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams. And again, for instance, we're going to need to apply for electrical permits with our building permits, and I can't imagine that the building department in Carver would...
Why? Not the tube.
Exactly. They're going to have oversight of what finally gets installed.
That's good to know. I think the public needs to know that. I think that's important.
Yeah. No, it's in no one's interest to use stale technology here.
Now, are the poles still on this property also?
I believe there are some remaining poles, yes.
Could you give me a general idea of where they're located?
I cannot, unfortunately. I'm sorry. I should have connected with our EPC.
I think they should be removed through the lower entrance, as it is wider and provides far more safety for...
Absolutely.
So it's not... It's going to be restricted from the upper one.
The primary access point is off of that southern parcel.
Right. It's only 13-foot wide, and you bring in a big, heavy truck.
All right, so southern?
Yep. Further questions or concerns from the board?
Are you going to ask similar?
I'm going to ask for the exact same, except I'm going to request, based on the location and amount of residents in this area, that three monitoring wells be installed upon the recommendation of our engineer in conjunction with the Board of Health and the Conservation That all the heavy poles should be entering and exiting through the lower entrance on Rochester Road, as it appears to be safer. And any further questions or concerns from the board? Please, Mr. Bot.
Did you say three monitoring wells?
Three, and because this stretches over, encompasses...
I just wanted to get the number.
Yeah, a very large area, and it's in direct relation to a very large population of residents of Carver and attenuated wetlands. Further concerns or comments from the board? Seeing none. The board will accept a motion to approve the request by Solar Carver III LLC for minor modification of site plan review located at 62 Rochester Road in regards to the material change of poles under the same conditions as prior, with three testing wells, as stated, and the access and egress for heavy equipment, as stated.
And the remaining poles removed within a year?
Yes, the same.
Okay.
Yep, the exact same.
You and I will look at it before we...
Right. Yeah, it should be the exact same, a little more on the wells, and in regards to the removal of the heavy equipment, that should be done through safer access.
I made said motion.
I'm sorry. Mr. Robinson made the motion, and Ms. Sordillo seconded it. Further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Helen Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Our next order of business is minor modification continued, request by Cranberry Point Energy Storage LLC for a site plan minor modification and special permit extension, request 31R Main Street. We approve the extension for a year, correct?
Correct.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Anything you wish to elucidate this evening?
Go ahead.
Sure. So for the...
So, for the record, Chris Coranta, Plus Power, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. During last week's Planning Board meeting, the board requested additional information from Cranberry Point, including site plan that included the equipment, as well as information on the previously approved site plan, the equipment, the Megapack and the currently planned Megapack 2 XL. To that end, Cranberry Point provided multiple documents on Friday morning, March 24th, for the board's review. Those documents included the full site plan showing the equipment placement, which also included the project substation and the switchyard layout for the Eversource interconnection. We also provided product data sheets for the original Megapack and the Megapack 2 XL, as well as a set of slides that made comparison of those products and the site plans. My understanding that the Carver Fire Department has also submitted a letter per this board's request covering their review of the minor modifications and the conclusions regarding that review. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you.
Mr. Bott, excuse me, when we talked about maybe doing a little site walk there, is that possible?
Well, I, I suppose it is. Typically, when we do a site walk, we notify the applicant and they stake out the property so we have some idea what we're looking at when we're on the site.
So.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to do a site walk.
I'm happy to do it if it's. You feel the same?
Site walk's always gonna be helpful.
Yep. Alright, if that's alright with you gentlemen, we'd like to arrange a site walk. Questions or concerns from the board?
Yes, well, the, one of the questions that, that I had from last week was. What, what are you guys doing different and is it safe to, when compared to what's happened over other projects, i.e. Southhold, that has one-third the output and twice, two to three times the number of containers? That's, that's where, that's what I'm looking at. I, I'm very concerned they're packing too much in and not taking care of the things properly that we're just putting 10 pounds into a five-pound bag. Anything, did anybody?
So, I don't know the other project, I can only talk to what was, you know, in published media. I can cite that there are a number of different energy storage products and providers out there on the market. Not all of them have the quality, safety and functionality that the Tesla Megapack 2 does. I'm not surprised by the equipment counts. If you start looking at equipment that have inverters separate from battery containers that use different technology, use Samsung LG modules that are much bigger, bulkier and based on NMC prismatic cell chemistries, those tend to be much larger containers. The Tesla Megapack is an extremely efficient use of space and the energy storage solution, like we talked about last week, using an LFP cell. Yes, the enclosure is slightly larger than the Megapack 1, but that is also incorporating sort of the increased space. We talked about pretty extensively the thermal mass of an LFP cell versus the cylindrical cell and the temperatures at which those cells enter into thermal runaway and how quickly they can, you know, with adjacent cells in the Megapack 1, cause thermal runaway to propagate into unexpected and still safe failure mode where the enclosure does consume itself. In contrast to the Tesla Megapack 2 XL with the LFP cells where the UL 9548 testing does show that, that same sort of caused event, forced failure of thermal runaway of six cells only caused the seventh to fail, caused no flaming, no explosion, no deflagration and no damage to anything beyond those cells. It gets into the chemistry differences of the cell, the cell components, the cell construction, and it, it's hard for me to try and compare what is, you know, is a extremely high-quality and highly regulated, safety-tested piece of equipment that went through a nationally-recognized testing lab to meet the certifications it's noted to meet versus what some other vendor and other supplier is using in a different state.
Okay, and when they're doing that testing, they're doing it on one battery pack, correct?
No, they're doing it on an entire unit.
On an entire unit, like?
The entire enclosure.
The entire enclosure containing how many battery packs?
24 battery packs.
That is, okay, so.
All charged to 100% SOC.
Again, so that's one Megapack 2.
Yep.
Now, is every Megapack 2 in a different trailer, in a different pad?
Yes.
It's all on a different pad?
Yes, maybe what I could do is take a step back and explain to you what the UL 9548 test standard does and why that data is used to inform a hazard mitigation analysis that the fire department and fire professionals use and fire engineers use to assess the safety of the product. So what UL 9548 does is it requires you to test stages of the subcomponents of a battery system or an energy storage system all the way up to the complete product.
Right. You talked about this, you talked about this last week.
So, the third stage is to take the entire enclosure, force enough cells within that enclosure to cause thermal runaway to cascade to additional cells. In the Megapack 2 XL, by forcing six cells all grouped together into thermal runaway, which statistically is an extremely limited chance of ever happening, that caused one additional cell to go into thermal runaway, did not propagate to other modules, did not cause the whole enclosure to go in, on fire, inflame, produce smoke or anything else. That standard is what informs the hazard mitigation analysis done by a licensed third-party fire professional engineer along with the emergency response plan that's developed that then goes to the Carver Fire Department or any fire department as part of it meeting its compliance to NFPA 855. So I think trying to compare whatever key capture energy is using in New York in a different project, in a different environment to this is really an apples-to-oranges comparison without a lot of technical details to, to look at. I can guarantee you only that they're not using the Tesla product at that quantity.
So, based on, based on the, the image and the data sheet there, how many Megapack 2 XLs are, are in that?
So that is one Megapack 2 XL.
So it is in, one Megapack 2 XL is in two?
I'm sorry, just let me make sure which picture you were showing, 'cause like the.
The one on the front.
The Megapack 1 data sheet or the two?
It says Megapack 2.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
XL data sheet.
That is two enclosures next to each other.
Okay, so that's two separate Megapack 2?
Yep.
This one, right?
Yes, sorry, that's the Megapack 1 data sheet, it's the one with the picture in the top corner, yeah.
I haven't even seen.
The gray, darker gray one?
Uh, no, sorry, that's the second page, it's this one here.
Alright, okay, I, I have it, yeah.
Got it.
So on the screen is the comparison, the Megapack 1 and Megapack 2. Of course, I don't have that graphic loaded up that you were talking about, but that is, the picture you guys were just talking about are two of those?
Yep, so, the Megapack 1 on the left-hand side, the top enclosure to the picture on the right top, it's, both of those are a single Megapack enclosure, Megapack 1, Megapack 2 XL.
Can you scroll down just a little bit, Tom?
Thanks.
Are the Megapack 2s louder, less louder than?
They're fairly comparable. The LFP cells don't heat up quite the same way as the NMC and what benefits this project is that it's more of a duration project versus a power project, so you're not heating the cells as quickly, but we still are required to see, you know, through the EFSB process, the extremely stringent mass EPA specs or noise regardless of the product.
Right, and the coolant themselves make coolers.
Yeah, it's a liquid cooling system like a radiator in a car.
And you will be doing something so that the sound is quelled?
Yeah, we've got a, we are required to meet the, the sound. We did a baseline study and that study was actually done a second time by the EFSB. The first time it was done, I think, in the spring, so you had what we all have in New England, the peepers, insects, all of that stuff. They actually had us redo the study in March with no snow on the ground, which is probably the most stringent noise requirements you can possibly get, 'cause you got no dampening from the snow, you've got no other insect or critters causing noise from the baseline, and we can't exceed 10 dB at the property lines with the project at its peak operation to those numbers.
And can you tell me how Carver will benefit from this?
So, I think we talked about it a little bit last week, this is a bit unique in the sense that unlike some of the other projects you've talked about tonight, other projects in Carver, this is connecting to the state and really New England's transmission system, which you have a huge asset as part of that in the substation that already exists in Carver and the, I think, seven or eight transmission circuits that come in through that substation. However, we will be a resource that provides tax dollars to the town. I think, right now, Eversource is your largest taxpayer in the town, I think we will be in that same category and we will use none of the normal resources that a commercial or residential structure would have in terms of sewer, water, or any of those sort of applications.
And how did you pick Carver?
It's really, I hate to say it's not really relevant to the town itself, but to be honest, it's not really relevant to the town. It's the same sort of problem we all have living in New England with where the electricity infrastructure exists. And so we look at where the resources are needed in order to keep the transmission system stable, to keep the lights on at a transmission level, which then cascades down to a distribution level that then cascades down to our homes. And where the retirement of a lot of the fossil fuel power plants that have been retired in this state and in New England have continued to occur that help, or not help, I shouldn't use that word, that add to the instability of the transmission system and that's where an energy storage system that can respond in both charge and discharge to the grid in really fast response times is critical to overall stability of the transmission system.
Did you respond to our site walk? I'm sorry, I might have missed something, but.
I, I didn't think I needed, I thought it was a, I thought it was a requirement, I didn't think I had a.
No, no.
I'm more than happy to walk the site with you if you guys need to, I think some of you have walked it. I know I've walked it with Mr. Deon and Mr. Gasky before, but, I mean.
I may have missed it, I was out for a while.
I think it was me and Mr. Deon.
Yeah.
Maybe that was it, I'm sorry, Mr. Shea, Mr. Deon.
I haven't been out there.
But I mean, I've walked it a dozen times, so, sure, I mean, I don't have any issue with walking the site. It's probably still staked from what was, you know, we're gonna pretty much walk around the, through the woods a little bit and then along the Eversource easements.
It was raining last time we were there, too. Good day for you for a site walk, Monday, noon?
Sure.
Monday at noon time does not work for me.
Okay, what's a good time for you?
Well, fortunately, the only time that is good for me. Is. Friday morning, early morning.
Friday, early morning? Early meaning?
Probably, would have to be before 10 o'clock, I'd probably have to go on my own.
Okay.
In the event, in the event that I hold everybody up.
Probably join you, probably have to join you.
I mean, I, we have a, we have one of our, one of my staff lives in Ducksbury, so, you know, I'm an hour's ride, he's 15 minutes, so as long as I can get permission through the landowner, which shouldn't be an issue, we can support pretty flexible hours.
Would either one of those work for you, Mr. Deon?
What, Monday at noon, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
Mr. Bott, would it, we'd like to arrange, I suppose, the three of us, Monday at noon, and then, what's a good time for you? If it's, make sure, if that's alright with you, Monday at noon?
I'll, yeah, I'll be here.
Are we talking about this Friday or are we talking about next Friday?
I, that's the thing, I'm not even available for three Fridays, so, right, I'm, I'm in the middle of training for a new position and my time, 8 to 5, is gone for the next three, for the next two weeks.
I mean, 6 AM, 7 AM, Saturday.
Is Saturday a better day?
Sleepover.
Yeah, I would do a Saturday.
Yeah, as far as, unfortunately, I don't have, yeah, you know what, I'm not on call until after Easter, so.
So, you two gentlemen, Saturday at?
Not this Saturday.
Not this Saturday, this is the following Saturday.
I'm, you know.
It's okay.
It's my season, I am straight out.
Yeah.
Works for you, I can do, you know, we've got light till about 7, 7:30, if you wanna do it after that, too, like I said, I got a guy that lives in Ducksbury, so.
Okay.
I could do after 5 o'clock. So.
Absolutely.
Alright, after 5 o'clock means?
This week, I could do something after 5 o'clock this week.
Would 5 o'clock or 5:30 be better for you?
Probably 5:30, I get out of work at 5.
Okay, you two gentlemen, okay at 5:30 on Saturday?
Yeah, make it happen.
And?
No.
What, Saturday?
No, 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 we're not talking about Saturday, we're talking about night through the week, right?
Oh, so we're, I think we're on Monday, March 27th, 5:30 right now.
Yeah, if you guys wanna do it tomorrow, Thursday or Friday, too, I mean, honestly. You tell me what works.
Again, Alan.
Whatever's easiest, I'm.
I'm not gonna be here Thursday, but I'm, I could swing by around noon time on Friday without a problem.
That would be fine.
If that's.
Friday, we can do Friday.
I might be able to make it Friday, I don't know what my schedule is.
Alright.
But I've got a lot, I know I've got a lot for the next, I've got a lot on my plate for the next couple of days.
You'll have, you'll have two chances, if you don't make it Friday, if it's Friday at noon time's good, most of us will make it.
Yep.
And my first available day would be next Tuesday.
At 5, or 5:30?
5:30.
Alright, we'll make those work.
Alright, so we got.
I just gotta check with the landowner and I'll confirm with you, Mr. Bott.
Yep.
So we got 5:24 at noon, I mean, 3:24 at noon?
No.
We're past 3:24. A part of it. Thank you, I knew that, it's a test.
If you can go back in time.
We're going back in time.
3:27.
I was available for 3:24.
I should have been on that, sorry.
3:31.
Monday, March 27th at noon?
We're doing this Friday, 3:31 at noon time.
Monday, April.
And.
Monday is, I'm gonna do Tuesday.
And, and Mr. Robinson and possibly Mr. Gasky will be April, Tuesday, April 3rd, 4th?
Friday's the first.
At 5:30.
Friday's the first, second, third, fourth, fifth.
Friday noon, Tuesday 5:30.
So April 4th is the day for us?
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 30, alright, see, I think we're the 31st, but it, it's this Friday at noon and then Tuesday at 5:30.
Yeah, John, you can do Tuesday at 5:30?
If you can fit one of, or the other one in, John, that'd be great.
Mr. Chair, I got a quick couple of questions.
Please, help, please, we were.
What would happen if a lightning strike one of those units?
So, in all honesty, the likelihood of a lightning strike coming anywhere close to this equipment with everything else around it is almost zero, I wouldn't say it's completely zero, but it's gonna hit what is a better grounding path and those transmission poles and everything else are a much better target, but the system will still, so part of the design engineering work is what's called the grounding lightning study, they go through, look at the probabilities of lightning strikes and what the faults would be and all of that detail and architect in. all of that detail, and architect in an earthing system, a grounding system that would dissipate it, the same, similar sort of structure that's already in place around the substation. And if you actually look at that, um, the transmission tower, the guideline, guide wire at the top, um, the OPGW is also acting as a lightning arrester, as well as communication for a pole, uh, for a transmission circuit.
Yeah, another question. Um, on the Megapack 2, so I see you have the ground units. So it looks like there's what, like nine doors on there?
I think there's eight bays with the batteries. There's a customer interface where the AC cables are connected in, and then there's the access for maintenance to the cooling system, like where the pump and that stuff is.
So if, just if you had a problem with one of the batteries, it would shut that whole pad down?
It would shut that whole enclosure down, yes.
But the, all right.
Can you explain why lithium battery storage is so important for our future?
Yeah, I can certainly try and give a couple of examples. Um, some of this, I will apologize if I start to go off on too deep a tangent, please pull me back. But, um, I think a really good example that I like to use is for, if you take a normal generation plant, just pick 100 megawatt power plant, don't care what fuel it's using, historically, that power plant was never allowed to operate at 100% capacity. What it would do is operate at somewhere around 80% capacity. And that reserve capacity that it could provide, so to follow that math, instead of producing 100 megawatts, it would produce 80 megawatts. And what the ISO would do, the ISO for ISO New England, would look at all of the resources and sort of plan across all of them that sort of capability. And they do a whole bunch of different studies, both actively as well as modeling, that would allow them to calculate if a fault happens and you lose some generation source, or if they've got to take equipment out for maintenance, et cetera. They now have this extra capacity across the grid that they can turn on, or engage, or enact to cover and compensate for those faults that occur. That's one sort of simple example. Um, a lot of times, we've got, all through New England, we've got plants that are called peaker plants. We've got generation plants all over the Massachusetts, for example, that are natural gas plants that, um, never run. They probably run a total of about 24 hours in the entire year. But they run during extreme peaks. They take 15 to 20 minutes to come online. A battery system can sort of come online and provide that peak capacity really quickly, really efficiently, in milliseconds instead of 15 minutes, as a compensation for a fault on the grid or a loss of capacity. Um, another good example is what in the energy industry is being sort of considered as called the duck curve. If you go on ISO New England's homepage, iso-ne.org, I think, um, and you look at the system data, you'll see a curve that sort of looks like a duck. And that's the system performance over the course of the day. We tend to peak up small peak in the mornings, loads and demand comes down quite a bit, and then goes up in the evening. As you put more renewables on the grid, they re, they can react very quickly. Solar clouds go by, their output reduces, wind stops, wind generation reduces, but then it comes back on. That sort of intermittency can be easily compensated for by a system like what we're proposing here. And it's at that transmission level that those sort of macro issues exist and are managed every day by the ISO. This gives them a tool that can do not only what a, you know, keeping that little bit of capacity on an existing fossil fuel generator might do, but it also provides a whole bunch of other capability of being able to charge, which a generator couldn't do. It can, um, support ancillary services, they're called, for the grid, so frequency stability, voltage stability, things like that. There's a lot of functionality that that sort of a system can do that a traditional rotating machine can't perform on the utility grid. It's part of the integration of all the renewables to move towards removing fossil fuels from
And that's one of the main reasons why we're going in this direction with solar, is because of the fossil fuels, correct?
Absolutely.
Because they're ruining what in our life?
We've retired every coal plant, I think, for one in the entire New England states. We've only got, better or worse, we've got, I think, three nuclear plants. Everything else is gas-driven, as we talked about last year. And while gas is a cleaner burning fuel than coal or others, it's still a fossil fuel.
Right. And fossil fuel is not what we want for the future.
It's not what I want.
No.
Please.
Um, this, this project was initially, um, approved in 2019, correct?
I believe that's the original, yes.
And it's been what, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts basically holding you back from not getting permits?
It has been the EFS, well, so the FSB process that is an additional permitting process we need to go through on top of the municipal, that's been our delight.
So if the Commonwealth wasn't dragging their anchor for these years, basically, you could have built this three years ago, had 116 units online using the old-style batteries, correct?
Uh, depending on exactly when the timing, but yeah, generally, yes.
Basically...
Generally, yes.
If this, if you had built shovel-ready the day after you got the permits, and the state said, "Yep, we need this," the state says, "You gotta have them," you could, this could be sitting up there now.
Yes, it would have been in operation, absolutely.
But through serendipity or whatever, now you want to put fewer units in with a more efficient battery, it's cost you, I imagine, carrying costs of some enormity, but that's irrelevant. But, so if, starting in 2019, looking at, say, 2025, you would have had all those years that way. Now, if this goes through, you'll have only two years of a better system online. So I don't know what, if that's better or worse, but that's a philosophical discussion for...
I mean, I think the only other sort of point I would make to that is that what we're talking about from a, a system of this sort of size, I mean, you look at power plants, they're not a short-term sort of investment. This isn't an energy infrastructure type of project. Um, and these are 20-plus-year life...
I mean, we could go back to whale oil and, you know, but that wouldn't work either, so I mean, that was the power of the day. Thank you.
And there were a lot of naysayers when electricity first came out, understandably.
I can stop and feed my horse anywhere, but if you have to go to a gas station to put gas in the car, that's an inconvenience. Henry Ford.
No, I'm not, but thank you very much. Would you keep your comments down, because it's very distracting from hearing this?
Through me, Ellen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions by the board?
No.
Seeing none. Uh, we'll see you gentlemen on your site walk. Well, we'll be meeting these gentlemen again. Um, so please, I would request that any questions or comments be forwarded to the board through me, and I'll be more than happy to ask them. Uh, we gave people quite, we were very generous with our time last time in regards to that, so I would appreciate that myself. All right. Um, no more questions or concerns from the board. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, I will see you Friday at noon with my compatriots.
Can I just ask a procedural question?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Oh, I have a same question. So when, uh, our next tentative meeting date, based on the fact that we have town meeting on the 11th, is April 18th? And I think I got the calendar straightened out this time. Uh, so April 18th is our next meeting. Uh, we talked about potentially the 7th or the 4th, but I think everybody wanted to push to the 18th, correct?
Uh, yes.
So April 18th.
I will see you then.
Oh, that was a procedural question.
That was basically, yeah, I wanted to know when I needed to come back to the board.
I, I also, last thing, uh, I understand that some things are gonna change on the design that you sent me. Um, and it should be for reference only, uh, but it, it should be stamped by an engineer.
For the site plan? Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, uh, make sure that's through. Not a problem.
Excellent, and, uh, I think that was all I had. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anytime, absolutely.
All right, our next order of business is a public hearing continued on the application of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company requesting a definitive subdivision approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located off Wareham Street on Assessor's Map 127, Lot 33, and Map 128, lots 1, 2, 3, 6-1, and 15 in Carver, Mass., in a residential agricultural district. Proposed work includes construction of a plus or minus 400 linear foot roadway and cul-de-sac stormwater management system, and off grade in support of three-lot conventional subdivision. Each proposed single-family dwelling lot will have its own private well and septic system. Good evening, Rob.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Rob Dambroso, Dambroso Law in Plymouth. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Slocum Gibbs, uh, Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company, the petitioner. Uh, we are here seeking definitive sub, approval of our definitive subdivision plan. Uh, again, we've got an extensive history here. This will be our sixth appearance before this board, our sixth hearing. Um, just to briefly rehash, it's an approximately 400-foot roadway with a cul-de-sac, uh, gentle 2% grade. We're meeting all design standards to subdivide this approximately 451-acre property into three proposed lots, each suitable for a single-family residence, uh, and that is by right in the zoning district. Uh, we've got suitable lot area and frontage for each lot. We've got an ORAD delineating wetlands. Um, and we've, again, discussed at length the, the reason for picking this site and location in terms of sightline, safety, uh, et cetera. Um, the most recent relevant history, I believe, for this board is, there's been a series of comments from, uh, your peer review engineer, Fussin' O'Neill. Um, the most recent of which was February 27th, and we believe that all conditions at this point have been satisfied. The most recent changes, to refresh your memory, uh, were three waivers. Uh, there was a waiver of the cul-de-sac, required cul-de-sac design, which was designed to allow us to keep all site improvements outside of the jurisdictional no-work area that's, uh, adjacent to the boring vegetated wetland. As you may recall, we went to the Conservation Commission, presented this project, uh, at your request, um, and they advised us that they would prefer to see, uh, the roadway outside of the 60-foot, 65-foot buffer. We returned to this board, and this board expressed a preference for having all permanent site improvements outside of that, um, jurisdictional area, which we have done with our most recent plan revision. And in order to accomplish that, we also requested and believe this board is prepared to grant a waiver, uh, from the typical requirement for a sidewalk along that stretch closest to the, um, buffer zone to the boring vegetated wetland. Uh, the third waiver was a waiver relative to setbacks to existing structures, as Mr. Bott explained at the last hearing, um, again, to allow the revamped cul-de-sac configuration that this board desired in order to bring the improvements outside of the, uh, buffer area to the wetland, uh, boring vegetated wetland, I should say. Um, and, uh, with that, I believe we've submitted a plan that addresses all concerns, and, um, I think that Mr. Bott has proposed wave, final waiver language, similar to what's in the Fussin' O'Neill memo. But I'm certainly more than happy to field questions, and I have Beals and Thomas, our civil engineers, here with me as well to field questions, and, uh, the principal of Slocum Gibbs, Mr. John Garrettson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
There was a, um, a new house being built eventually, or maybe, possibly, or... My only question is, you haven't boxed yourself out now by making the house so that you're gonna need waivers to build it. In other words, your setbacks will still work?
Yes, it's our belief that the setbacks would work, and, you know, again, it's, it's at our peril, but we would need to go through building and so forth.
You hadn't closed that out, so you come back, oh, oh...
No, no, we've, we've given ourselves suitable lot area and frontage that we think we're okay.
All right, gentlemen, how we doing? Do we have any questions or concerns, comments? Sorry, these plants can be...
I've got the full set on the screen if you want me to scroll to something.
Thank you.
Since this is where most of the action is, I just went to this page. Got 14 pages.
I'm sorry, we have, the, the vibrant blue line is the...
Vibrant blue is the 65-foot, um, distance to the boring vegetated wetland. This is the boring vegetated wetland line itself.
And the light blue is the 100-foot?
This is still gonna be, uh, maintaining about approximately 14-foot, uh, retaining wall?
Yeah, I don't think that, I got Dan Gagnon here who can answer the technical questions, but I don't think there's been a...
The wall height...
It probably came down a little bit because we moved it.
Dan Gagnon, the Ducksbury engineer, um, the wall height was reduced as we moved it up the hill there. So it's partly, it's farther up, farther up on the hill, then? Yes.
And that's still outside the 65-foot?
Correct, yes.
Excellent. Sorry I'm doing this to your mouth. It hurts me, too. All right, now we have our Fussin' O'Neill review. All right, now we have our Fussin' O'Neill review.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, I did my best to put together a draft decision emblazoned in this kind of... written order draft, which incorporates Fussin' O'Neill's comments, recommendations, conditions, and waivers as well, if that's any help.
Questions or comments from the board?
If I may, again, one of the things we had talked about was what's that wall going to look like, so there is a detail of the ready rock wall.
I think the basis is we're trying to prevent the look of poured concrete.
That. The detail of the ready rock wall on the screen there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine. I do see the list of conditions here. A condition should be included to require that the tree clearing and grading on Lot A and Lot C be conducted in order to obtain the specific sightlines.
In that condition, I believe I noted that it had to be done prior to the installation of the base course of the pavement. Because we want it sooner rather than later.
Right, right, but it doesn't include the tree clearing and grading. Oh, sorry. What am I looking at? Oh, sorry. Stakes be set to mark the boundaries of the area to be cleared, and the clearing limits are inspected by the town prior to clearing. No site prep, tree cutting, filling, grading, or other work to be done in anticipation of subdivision approvals shall be performed prior to definitive plan approval, which is what we're looking at now, potentially.
And one of the things I added in condition number nine is the developer, their engineers, and their contractors shall hold a pre-construction conference with planning, building, conservation, health, and operation and maintenance departments prior to the start of any construction on site. Stakes be set to mark the boundaries of the area to be cleared, and no clearing limits be, or, and no clearing limits are inspected prior to any clearing being done. So typically, in my experience, and I don't believe it's required in Carver for a pre-construction conference, to make sure that before they put a shovel in the ground, their contractors, their engineers, everybody comes and meets with the technical staff here to make sure everybody understands what the conditions are before they start moving dirt or cutting trees or anything like that.
The waiver for the 50-foot front setback and 30-foot side setback should be based on the existing footprint of the existing buildings. In other words, if it's torn down, built back up, it should follow whatever's current.
Yeah, if they, if they want to build something new on the site, it has to respect those setbacks, but the existing...
Yep.
Be all built to the road, road to the...
Yeah.
Chicken in the egg.
Andy says that you've addressed our comment regarding multiple principal structures. It is recommended that the planning board review the applicant's response to this item so it is clear what it is, what is and isn't being considered. I think we've cleared that up unless somebody else on the board has questions. And condition for the installation of a monitoring wall to be installed on site to verify the depth to seasonal high groundwater, vertical separation, as well as sample groundwater. Installation of the well should be completed by the applicant during construction, and that should be based on the recommendations of our engineer in conjunction with the Board of Health and Conservation Commission.
In the draft that I put together, we'll add that as 10 because I didn't have the monitoring wall on here.
And we've added the retaining wall to the site plan that we're approving, or possibly approving.
The retaining wall is shown here.
Yep.
And there's a detail of the retaining wall in...
Okay.
In plan set, that ready lock wall.
Last question, what's going to happen to the iron blast furnace that's, is on the property?
No iron blast furnace.
Well, what is the...
The, the...
Oh, please identify yourself, sorry.
My name's John Garrettson, I'm the principal, the owner of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company. The, the bog out in front was open pit iron excavation in the 1800s, and we didn't have to move down to the shower furnace and up to federal furnace. The material from that, that bog goes back to the early, at least the early 1900s. The house that's there now, the principal house, was just a hunting camp. So, the property, the, there was no excess iron or except the 17 acres out in front property across the street, across Wareham Street.
So what...
No more iron mining.
No, what's the, the structure in front of the house there? Chimney, fireplace?
Oh, okay, there's, there was a cement structure that was on the property.
That one right there?
It was a water tower. Is that what you're talking about?
No, it looked like a fireplace outside fireplace.
Or maybe a barb?
Well, there's an outside fireplace next to my house. It was just a rock fireplace.
I thought it was brick or...
No, it was a, it was a gathered stone fireplace.
It's all cemented together, right?
Yes, it's all cemented together. That's permissible, that's going to go if somebody wants to move it.
All right.
That's, that's the, that's the destruction.
Pig or rocks?
No, no, it's so, it's not of any historical interest. Okay. It's very attractive, and we're sorry to see.
It is, well, it is very attractive. It's not functioning. I had a couple of chimney guys look at it, we tried to line it, but it didn't, it didn't work. My grandfather would hold a pig roast or something on there to look at old things, but that's it. That's okay.
Nope, thank you very much. Any further questions?
If you want to talk to me personally after the meeting, I'd be glad to.
My back isn't that strong anymore. Questions or comments, concerns of the board? All right. So I went over a couple of the conditions that, that weren't listed in the, in the draft proposal. Mr. Bott, if you would read the list of conditions in regards to this.
Very well. So, condition one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the true copy of the recorded plan as registered at Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the board. Two, the plan shall be constructed as approved, and any revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. Three, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site. During construction, sediment and erosion controls shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during construction, and roadway aprons shall be kept, kept swept and clear of any dust, dirt, or debris. Four, any outstanding balance of the review and inspections deposit accounts should be paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy. Five, prior to the issuance of a building permit, all easements, deed restrictions, and conveyances, if any, as submitted to the planning board shall be executed and recorded at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and shall be submitted to the Carver Planning Department. Six, during construction, all local, state, and federal laws will be followed. Seven, there shall be no burying of stumps anywhere on the approved development site. Eight, adequate site distance shall be achieved by regrading and vegetation removal as shown in sheet, easy for me to say, as shown in sheet C51. Such tree clearing and grading for Lot A and Lot C shall be conducted in order to obtain the specified site distance and shall be completed prior to the installation of the base course of the subdivision roadway. Nine, the developer, their engineers, and their contractors shall hold a pre-construction conference with planning, building, conservation, health, and operation and maintenance departments prior to the start of any construction on site. Stakes shall be set to mark the boundaries of the areas to be cleared, and that the clearing limits are inspected by the town prior to clearing. We had 10, the inclusion of the monitoring well, and you said there was another...
As long as the, the retaining wall is included as what's approved, you know, the stacked stone.
Yep.
And I don't, I would think that the approval of the waiver in regards to the setbacks is based on the existing buildings.
Retaining well built per design in plan. And typically, I would recommend the board vote the conditions and the waivers. So if I may, just go over the waivers as well?
Yes, please.
So waivers, the planning board approves the request of the following waivers through design criteria. Section 6334, waiver to provide plans at a greater scale and requirement of 1 inch equals 40 feet. Approval of the waiver is recommended as the plan shows details clearly and adequately within the scale provided. Waiver for section 633.4D.I. Waiver for the requirement to provide ground elevations based on the 1925 NGVD-based datum. Approval of this waiver is recommended because NKBD88 is the current datum generally accepted by the industry. Section 7.6.6, 7.3.6.C, waiver from the cul-de-sac layout is detailed in Appendix B to keep permanent site improvements outside of the locally jurisdictional 65-foot no-work area of the bordering vegetated wetland. FNO recommends approval of this waiver based on the modified cul-de-sac layout since tourney movements are reviewed and approved by the deputy fire chief. It is not anticipated that other large vehicles will be frequenting this type of subdivision and based on discussions conducted during the previous planning board meeting. Section 7.9.7.3.9.8.I, waivers for providing sidewalks on one side of a minor street to keep permanent site improvements outside of the locally jurisdictional 65-foot no-work area of the bordering vegetated wetland. FNO agrees that a sidewalk can be admitted on the cul-de-sac that abuts the wetland and recommends approval of the waiver. It is noted the sidewalk is still proposed, but a portion of the cul-de-sac provides pedestrian access between the roadway and infiltration basin. Section 2300, waiver to provide 50-foot front setback and 30-foot side yard requirements from the existing structures. FNO recommends approval of waivers since the structures are existing and based on distinct discussions conducted during the previous planning board meeting. I do want to note that in the findings of the board and the deputy fire chief's review regarding the cul-de-sac, it does say that Assistant Deputy Chief Boe reviewed the reduced cul-de-sac sketch with emergency vehicle movements dated 21023, that you see there. As noted in a February 14, 2023 email, quote, "The provided sketch satisfies the requirements for fire department access." I will also add that this particular design has no driveways planned for within the cul-de-sac. For future projects, the presence of driveways off the cul-de-sac may have an impact on this type of decision.
Excellent. Do any of the board members have any questions, concerns, or additions? All right, the chair will...
Is the hearing still open?
Well, I'm sorry, yep. It is a public hearing, would anybody from the, if you gentlemen will excuse us? Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anybody has any questions or concerns in regards to this project, now's the time. Seeing none, the chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make said motion.
On the application of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company requesting a definitive subdivision approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Dion.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Sordillo. Further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. The chair will accept a motion to approve the application of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company requesting a definitive subdivision approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located off Wareham Street on Assessors Map 127, Lot 33, and Map 128, lots 1, 2, 3, 6-1, and 15 in Carver, Mass., in a residential agricultural district with the conditions and waivers as discussed.
I will make that said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Discussion amongst the board? Seeing none. Mr. Bott, I just want to qualify. Who are the voting members?
Yes, so because we do not have the Mullen Rule in effect, Ellen has missed a meeting, so she's ineligible to vote. This is a subdivision, it is a simple majority vote by the board, so your voting members are Shea, Dion, Gasky, and Robinson.
Thank you. Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Please.
Thank you very much.
You have a good evening. We're going to take a brief...
Recession.
Our next order of business is on the application, a public hearing on the application of Weathervein at Patriot Pines requesting a site, special permit and site plan review to section 2230, 30100, 3900, 4300, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaws, and a definitive subdivision plan pursuant to the Carver subdivision control bylaw for property located at Zero South Meadow Road in Carver, Mass., Assessors Map 112, lots 1-5E, 1-5I, J, K, L, M, P, Q, R, and 3-88A, and Map 107, Lot 1-4A. The applicant seeks, seeks to append nine plus or minus acres of adjoining land to the property and modify the subdivision boundaries in compliance with MGL Chapter 41, Sections 81W. Two, increase the unit count from 54 units to 66 units, excuse me. Three, alter the building configuration to create zoning-compliant triplexes. And four, adjust the roadway layout and lot configurations to accommodate alterations to phases two and three of the project in the residential agricultural zoning district. Good evening, gentlemen. The floor is yours.
Good evening, thank you very much. I am Jeff Tocchio, I represent Weathervein at Patriot Pines LLC. Remember, Jim Bristol is to my right. Remember, Jim Bristol is to my right, and Sarah Sterns and Dan Gagné are on my side. They've been with you all evening. I know that for a fact. This evening, we're just looking at Phases Two and Three. The last time we were before you folks, it was, I want to say, February 14th. We had, at that point, we had comments back from Fuss and O'Neil, but that we didn't have written comments for you folks. They were subsequently issued on February 27th, and I know that you have them in your file. What Fuss and O'Neil stated was that all of their concerns, there was satisfaction. They then went through, they confirmed, basically, various responses, et cetera, on open issues. And then ultimately, they recommended, bless you, recommended conditions that are included in that document. I know that you just took a look at the draft, which is there, which is all consistent with the conditions, recommendations, et cetera. Moreover, that also goes through the submissions that were made, the condominium documents, et cetera, and also reference to Fire Department, Board of Health, all of which are incorporated in the documents. With that, you can answer questions if you've got any. I know that you're all very familiar with the project by this time. And then we've also got some of the plans, if you do have any further up, follow-up, further questions.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Any questions from, please, I'm going to take a moment to review this.
Great.
Please, please do.
Which houses?
Yes, Donald.
On this plan, I've actually built, which ones are the ones that are built? Numbers and numbers.
Yes, the ones that are built, they're Phase One.
Right, I see the mailroom, I see coming around.
Bless Dan, we'll do that.
What sheet would you like that, Dan?
Five-one. Yep.
So the original two homes were this one here.
Number two.
That's number three, Weathervein Drive, and then number twenty-one, Fairway Landing. Those were the two that were up in the very beginning, and since then, we've added number two and four, Fairway Landing, and the foundation is in for number one, Eagle Terrace.
You can see them from the street, and the other ones, you know, far more spread out, those are kind of stuck because those were joined together. These are nice and spread. These are kind of crunched because they were kind of pre-existing.
Exactly, exactly, yep.
So the rest of them are more...
Yep.
This one almost looks like it, there's like a big shed. Okay. Just trying to figure it out.
Sure.
Yeah, maybe do a little bit of that.
You got it.
You have Eagle and Fairway, you have like bogey and double bogey. I'm not a golf player, I don't know if it turns.
Great idea.
You don't want to live on double bogey lane.
A sliced underlaid.
Yeah.
Subdivision down the street with bogey and bocal lanes both on it.
I know, in Plymouth, the plan runs something in Lois Lane, someone, they could get a Lois Lane for him.
Oh, that's a good one. Lois Lane's a good one.
That is a good one, yeah.
Well, we have Learning Lane where the schools, where I worked, Learning Lane.
In Waymouth, there's a Penny Lane.
Penny Lane.
Penny Lane.
The commercial district of Barbara Shaves and other customers.
Yep, absolutely. And the banker never wears a Mac in the pouring rain.
Oh, and one drive?
Very strange, no. No, it's, what have we got? We got other ones, we've got Tiger, Sand Trap, just try to go with something. Mulligan, yeah. Everyone likes Mulligan.
All right. So seeing no further questions or comments from the board, I'll open it up to the public. Seeing no further questions or comments from the public, the chair will accept a motion to close the public hearing for the application of Weathervein at Patriot Pines requesting a special site permit plan review of the Carver zoning bylaw and a definitive subdivision plan pursuant to the Carver subdivision control law for property located at Zero South Meadow Road in Carver, Mass. So the board is looking for a motion to close that public...
I'll make said motion.
A motion made by Mr. Dion, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. All right, Mr. Bott. It says, you will no longer be proposing any three-bedroom units, correct?
Correct.
And that you are amenable to the outlining of sixty-six age-restricted units will be provided within the entire townhouse development. Seven of those units will be affordable housing units, and no units will have three bedrooms. Excellent.
Correct.
It is recommended that a condition be included to limit the number of duplexes and two-family structures for this development. You're not proposing any, and it says you're amenable to that condition? And I see you've outlined how the open space, you've given a general outline, but we're going to want something a little more substantial. It's recommended that a condition be included that outlines how it will be conserved and who will be conveyed to, which you said, the townhouse commission, and it's going to be used for a variety, just, we just want to make sure we get that down. I see you're responsible for the stormwater. And I think that was...
Yes, we've reviewed all twenty-three of the conditions, and they're all, they all conform with discussions at prior hearings, and then also the recommendations of Fuss and O'Neil.
Right, right. Well, now, it's probably going to become twenty-six because one of the conditions is, as we outlined, sixty-six units, seven affordable, no units will have three bedrooms.
Yep.
You'll be restricted from duplexes and two-family structures. You'll be required to put in writing exactly what's going to happen to the open space. And I think everything else is in there, except for three monitoring wells should be installed on site for the town. That, that's in there.
Yep, condition.
You will be responsible for the maintenance of those as part of the entirety of the complex. The words without returning to the planning board for minor modification of the site plan will be stricken from 20 with the agreement of the board. And with the agreement of the board, number 11, the first five words should be stricken, best effort shall be made, and it should read applicant and successive owners are to maintain a buffer between adjacent properties in the project site, if that's... Those are just concerns. You'll have to forgive me. We haven't made a motion to approve this project. All right. The chair will accept a motion to approve the project of Weathervein at Patriot's Pines, Zero South Meadow Road.
You can read the conditions?
Well, we have to open the motion, and then we have to discuss the conditions.
Okay.
All right. So I will accept the motion to approve Weathervein at Patriot's Pines LLC, modification of site plan and modifications of both definitive subdivision and special permit townhouse development, Zero South Meadow Road, Carver, Mass.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
With conditions?
With conditions.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gasky. All right. Any questions or concerns, and is everybody amiable to the conditions and the waivers as stated, which unfortunately for Mr. Bott is probably going to drain the last reserves of his energy here tonight? And are there any questions, comments, or concerns in regard to my suggestions on the edits of said?
Can you go over your edit?
Yeah.
Starting with number 11.
Give us your three conditions again, just so you know.
All right. I will go over them again. Jeez. All right. I'll start with number 11. My recommended effort...
Yep, best effort shall be made. Rick those five letters.
And, right, so applicant and successive owners are to maintain, is what the first set, some recommending should read here. Under number 18, monitoring wells should be installed, maintenance shall be done by the condo association or the responsibility of Weathervein at Patriot Pines. Under 20, all units are age-restricted with two bedrooms constructed in triplexes. There should be no duplexes or two-family structures within the development, and the rest of the sentence will be struck, and it will include a list of what is allowed in regards to Andrew Glynn's recommendations, and as agreed to by the applicant, A, sixty-six age-restricted units will be provided within the entire townhouse development. B, seven of those units will be affordable housing units. C, no units will have three bedrooms. A condition that prohibits duplexes and two families, which I think is already in there.
So right now, in condition 20, it says all units are age-restricted to two bedrooms constructed in triplexes. There should be no duplexes or two-family structures within the development, and the present says without returning, so you were striking...
We're striking without returning.
Without returning to the planning board for minor modification of site plan.
Because it wouldn't, I don't believe it would be a minor modification as it changes decreed upon use. Open space requirements are to be put in writing.
Twenty-two doesn't cover that?
I don't.
So that 22 says the sixteen-point-five-seven acres of open space shown as forty-three percent of the development shall be conveyed to the Townhouse Owners Association Condominium and shall record a restriction enforceable by the town provided that the open space have used for conservation, shore, preservation, and education, outdoor passive education, park purposes, for a combination of these uses, and shall be served by suitable access for such purposes, and maintained in such manner in perpetuity. Period. Within the proposed open space are drainage and septic easements along a strip of land, along with a strip of land adjacent to the Abutting Golf Course.
It doesn't identify to whom the open space is going to be conveyed, and in this case, it's proposed that it's the townhouse development, which is fine, but there are other options. They could give it to conservation or various other things, so it should be outlined specifically what is going to happen with the open space.
Number 20, you're back. If all the units are restricted to bedrooms in triplexes, why do you need this? There shall be no duplexes. I already told you what they can be. Now you're going to start telling everybody you can't do.
I employed a belt as well as suspenders.
It was a recommendation by our engineer also.
Okay.
And the final condition is of the affordable units, two should be in Phase One, two in Phase Two, and three in Phase Three, because that's where they added the extra space.
Yep.
Two in Phase One, two in Phase Two, and three in Phase Three.
Right, because that's where we're adding the extra space, so I think that would be How does the board feel?
Okay.
All right.
So the only waiver for this particular phase of the development is regarding the fence around the pond. All the other waivers were previously issued for the other two, and I just put them in there just so we've got it registered. All waivers for that development.
And I, I can't speak for the board, but I believe the board's consensus was that it wasn't an issue, but if it is, bring it up now. Fence around the pond, we waived the requirement because...
Maybe they had that button that says, "I can't get up."
Hopefully, it's waterproof.